Were defined as the owners of at least 10% of the assessed valuation of property within the annexation area. The initiating parties notified the city of their intention to seek annexation by submitting a letter. That occurred in June, and then the legislative body, the City Council, sets a date not later than 60 days after the filing of their request for a meeting with the initiating parties. That's what's happening here tonight.
Can I clarify, I mean, to the point of, what we're doing is this 10% stage, and we're dedicating this meeting, a meeting on the 31st, and a meeting in August, on the 14th, for this. We're not going to stage two, we're not doing anything else than, over the next three meetings, is to contemplate this through the presenters and through public testimony.
And that's why I was just getting to that council member, Gene. The purpose of this meeting is for three things. One, to determine whether the city will preliminarily accept, reject, or modify the proposed annexation area. Two, require the simultaneous adoption of pre-annexation zoning if the initiating parties have included that proposal in their submittal, and they have. And then, third, whether the council will require the properties in the annexation area to assume all or any portion of existing city bonded indebtedness. Now, is there a public process required at this stage? No, there's not. The statute does not require any public process or any public hearing. It is only required to be a meeting with the initiating parties. However, as council member Gene has explained, the council, because of the level of expressed public interest, has decided to accept a detailed presentation from the initiating parties, as well as public opportunities for input on the three separate meetings, tonight, the 31st, and on this 14th. There has been some confusion, I think, about whether or not there should have been a citizens' committee, or some detailed study, or some other process. And the answer to that question is, no, it's not required by state statute. There is a guide published by the Municipal Research Services Corporation, which provides advice to cities. They have a lengthy guide on annexation by Washington cities and towns, and what they suggest is, when there is an annexation that involves a considerable residential population, then a committee and a study is desirable. So, what does that mean? What's a considerable residential population? We've been given a couple of examples from North Bend and Issaquah, just a quick comparison. This proposed annexation involves 36 parcels, 18 of those are occupied, 18 are vacant. Of the 18 that are occupied, the owners of six of those have signed the petition. So, we're talking, in terms of owners who are not participating yet at this stage, we're talking about 12, owners of 12 parcels.
Well, to clarify, by occupied and vacant, you mean they have a structure on the site versus, correct, no structure on the site?
Correct, thank you, there. Not that there's a structure, nobody's home, but vacant, there's nothing built on it. So, North Bend is one of the examples that has been given, as to, here's when you might go do a study. What did their annexation look like? In 2008, they were looking at 1,400 acre annexation area, as opposed to about, we're talking here, 260. Six different neighborhoods, 543 houses, 46% of the city's then-existing household total, and 33% of, in the annexation area, of the city's then-existing population. I think we could all agree, that's a considerable residential population. Issaquah, similar. This was the proposed Quahini Annexation, it was the Quahini Master Plan Development, plus 14 other neighborhoods, total population area in the annexation, 10,000 people, which was about 35% of that city's then-existing population. So, those are situations where it's appropriate to have that lengthy pre-submittal process and study, not anything like what we have here. So, I just wanted to delay that question to rest with the council about where we are in the process. We're at the very first stage. The council has set up a more detailed than usual public process, and at this point, I'll turn it over to the applicants for their revision, and I won't go.
Okay, first. I want to come in, please.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I've met some of you before. My name is Ann Bibby, I'm the attorney with Phillips Park, Martin, Peterson. We are legal counsel, ladies' legal counsel for the Snoqualmie Heights Partners LLC. Snoqualmie Heights Partners are a group that has assembled the initiating parties together to make this 10% decision for annexation. Get closer, okay. First, we'd like to thank council and mayor for this opportunity to make this presentation. I know we've worked hard to find the schedule that would work for everyone, and we've got our, most of our principals here tonight, and our consultants, so we'd like to make a thorough presentation, make sure that everyone understands what is being proposed for the Snoqualmie Hills West annexation area. This is the first of two or three meetings on this same step, the 10%, 77% annex. We hope, though, that it is the beginning of a long conversation with the city over this annexation proposal. We think it's an exciting opportunity for the city, and we're glad we could be here tonight to talk with you about it. I'd like to start with some team introductions. And first, I'd like to introduce the principals of Snoqualmie Heights Partners LLC. We've got Mike Matick and Mike Ballard, Chip McBroom and Terry DeFoe. That's Mike Matick and Mike Ballard, who have stood up, unfortunately, Terry DeFoe was out of town tonight, but Mike and Mike both grew up in the greater Seattle area.
Wait, I'm trying to get it up for one second, because I noticed that a lot of these copies were made available for folks in the audience. Did we run out of them, do we have enough, because we could have staff in it more if folks want some copies? I don't see any interest out there. They'll be posted on the website.
Yeah, it's posted on the.
All right, did we run out of them?
There's some out there, there's some more out there.
Did they run out, can we start more? Okay. So, there's some folks in the back room over here, one of them, we get those distributed. I'm sorry, yeah.
I would know if there are, in fact, two packets out there, there's.
And you'll be showing it up here, you're.
Yeah, we'll be showing it up here, and everyone can follow along there. Anyway, Mike, Mike Matick and Mike Ballard have been business associates here in the Puget Sound area, independently, and then joined together in 2011, the long Broadview in Snoqualmie. Through Broadview, Mike and Mike have purchased and improved nearly 30 apartment communities around the United States, and they've also developed and improved a number of single-family homes. Community involvement and improvement has been a consistent theme in all of their real estate projects, and they believe that this has contributed both to the financial success of their projects, as well as how much they enjoy their work. Terry DeFoe, who's not able to join us tonight, has been working in the Seattle area as a developer for over 22 years, and he has become an expert on assembling and aligning owners to create all types of high-quality housing developments in the Puget Sound area. Solving environmental issues to create attractive developments with an emphasis on family and lifestyle are key to his success. And the fourth member is Chip McBroom with Winkner Real Estate. Chip is another lifelong resident of Washington State, and grew up in eastern Washington in a small-town community. He's been a Realtor in the greater Seattle area for over 15 years, specializing in rawland development and luxury real estate, primarily on the east side of King County. Most recently, Chip has been involved in successfully partnering sellers and developers, as well as builders, I'm sorry, sellers with developers and builders, on several hundred single-family home lots within the greater Snoqualmie Valley. So, that is our, that is the Snoqualmie Heights Partners, and they have assembled a team of consultants to help them. Must have been like, you're handing out a juice. So, the consultants that the Snoqualmie Heights Partners have assembled have deep experience in their fields, and also specific experience in Snoqualmie and in Snoqualmie Valley. We have Greg Pitt, who's formerly with King County, Randy Banneker, and Meg O'Conne from Banneker and Associates, myself, and I worked on Snoqualmie Ridge Phase 1 and Phase 2, for those of you who weren't on the council den. Kevin Jones with Transfo Group, Eric Labrie with ESM, who is our civil engineering firm, and Thomas Porres, who's our water rights attorney. In addition, Morgan Shook from Echo Northwest is here this evening with our fiscal analysis. And two consultants that we have not had to reach the point of using yet are Scott Brainerd with Winkner Resources, and Steve Helly with Geo Engineers. They will come along later in the environmental review process. So, if you want to go back, we wanted to review, I wanted to review what's on our presentation agenda tonight, so you know what we will be covering. Chip will provide us a description of the annexation proposal. I'll review the development timeframe that's proposed for this project. Thomas Porres will review water availability. Kevin Jones will review transportation and mobility, and Morgan Shook will review fiscal analysis. And we'll conclude with our analysis of the community benefits of this proposal for the city. I was going to cover the city annexation process, but Bob Sterling has just given a fine outline of that, so we'll just hold that for any questions that folks can have afterwards about the process. With that, then, I can go over to Chip for a description of the proposal.
Great. Can you hear me? Okay, great, thanks. Thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to, you know, come before you again, many of you, we've met several times since last August, we were at the retreat, we've met some of you council members and mayor individually. So, again, we wanted to walk through for the public one more time, our proposal, our idea of what we would like to do up in Snoqualmie Hills West with the proposed annexation. Basically, it's 250-plus or minus acres that the developer group has proposed for an active adult age restricted community, 55-plus. And that area would consist of many different types of housing, three, four, or five different types of single-family homes, as well as several, many numerous different floor plans, as well as price points. All of the things that you think about with an age-restricted community would be involved with this, those in King County, Redmond Ridge Trilogy comes to mind, so I would highly encourage you, Shea Homes did a great job developing that community some 15 years ago. So, we believe that the process is going to be heavily involved with you all, as well as the community, but it'll be innovative and comprehensive. Ann's going to discuss the timeline, but it's going to take a long time to get there. We believe our development agreement and deed restrictions will ensure the age qualification as long as the city wants it to endure. So, that's been a concern of many folks and individuals, that it will remain that as long as you want it to be. We believe that the master plan will meet the goals and community needs through the public process, and we believe in the public process, and that's why we're all here tonight, to get our experts and our people to give you the perspective that we feel, the information that we can explain in the best way possible. And our plan, we believe, will offer substantial, long-term economic benefits, as well as other benefits that are inherent to the community with regards to an age-restricted community. So, with that, then, we're going to talk about the maps.
My name is Eric Labrie with ESM Consulting Engineers. For those of you who haven't heard of ESM before, we were the original surveyors and civil engineers on Snoqualmie Ridge 1 and 2, and we worked with the city for a very long time. So, I'll just give you a brief overview of where the project sits. The purple area that's outlined right here, Snoqualmie Hills West, is surrounded on two sides by Snoqualmie Ridge 1, just north of it, Snoqualmie Ridge 2, just to the west of it. The Highway 18 and I-90 interchange, which is south down here. The project is also in close proximity to the casino, which sits just a little bit to the south and east of the site, then, of course, the downtown area, the Old One site area. So, that's kind of just a general overview of where it sits, and you get an idea of how large this area is in relation to other aspects of the city. This next map is a conceptual site plan. So, what we did here, using GIS data provided by the city, aerial contours from LiDAR, and some general information, we were able to identify some of the surrounding flats and development, we were able to identify some of the road corridors that lead up to the site. We looked at the comprehensive plan, took the transportation element, and looked at the connections north to the boulevard up here. I think the comprehensive plan has it aligned approximately like that. We wanted to show an alternative. Maybe that location isn't exactly where this needs to go through the environmental process, we'll figure that out, but the opportunity to provide a northern access connection to the Snoqualmie Boulevard, to the Parkway, and then, obviously, to the west of Stubble Street, and that road is already stubbed to the property. But the comprehensive plan also points out two other connections that go, two other alternatives that connect to the east. And so, we've shown those, and just the general idea of how those roads could lay out through the property is major arterial. Taking some of the environmental constraints that have shown up in the GIS program, we've put some buffers on them, we've taken out areas for roads, and we tried to come up with a general net area, just to see roughly how much we have.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Can that northern ingress, egress to the Parkway, where does that kick out on the Parkway?
The transportation element of the comprehensive plan has it lining up with Fisher, right We are showing a secondary alternative going about 600, 700 feet to the west of that as a possible option.
That would be like one of the bike park, I think, correctly where the bike park is?
Below the holding pond and the tech park. Mike, you?
So, the eight ridges that I show here, the 28 and 170, are essentially net of the major roads, and net of some of the assumed critical areas at this point. Unless there are any further questions about.
And the south alignment option, the one that goes through the casino parking lot, you need the casino and tribe's approval for that?
That actually doesn't go, at least what we're showing here, onsite and slightly offsite, we're not showing it going through the casino parking lot. We don't have that offsite alignment exactly figured out yet. There is something in the comprehensive plan of the transportation element that shows a direct connection southerly to North Bend Way. We haven't figured out exactly where that alignment needs to go yet, because we're not that far in the process, but there is right-of-way that exists almost to the property, and we have identified those two property owners.
I'm sorry, can you speak to the northern, I'm sorry, can you speak to the northern alignment option where I can't read my map, so?
Sure.
I don't know where, what, where was that, no, but it's northern.
Oh, it's northeastern alignment, I believe that's 80th.
Can you clarify the bottom portion in Snoqualmie Hills West in the comprehensive plan, if not any of your annexation?
Yes. So, the West Hills annexation area is approximately 260 acres, and you can see it in purple here. There is a small portion of property down the very southern end, that we have left out of our application. These parcels down here along the southern boundary of our property, of our proposal, exist both within the urban growth boundary of the city of Snoqualmie, and within King County's unincorporated area. So, they're bisected by the urban growth boundary. For our application purposes, those were not included in our application at this time, and the city has the ability, if they choose to bring in the entire area, they can modify the application to do that. Does that answer your question?
We're talking about the six properties below the bottom there, below the yellow line?
Correct.
What does that say? I'm sorry, I'm old-looking to this, or something.
Limit of annexation requests.
Got it.
So, unless there are any other questions, I'll turn it back over to Ann to continue.
One more, one more question. See, you identified the top road as the 80th, what are you identifying as the bottom road as the right-of-way?
I don't have that right-of-way off the top of my head. We'll get that information for you.
You lost me about that southern portion, you said it's excluded from the application, that there was, I mean, all of those properties are bisected with King County, and then, King County still, and, so what was the distinction again, that's the one?
The only property that is both within the city's urban growth boundary and in the county, that is included in our annexation petition, is this one property, and it's controlled by one of the.
Oh, I see, I mean, the property, whoever the owner is.
It's self-bisected.
Okay.
Yes. So, the property owners down here.
Are not by section.
Yeah. They're bisected by the urban growth boundary, which is the heavy dash line, so their property is here and here. They own both sides of that right-of-way.
Why, again, did you elect not to go with them? Is that because they were not in favor of it, or because you just did not approve them?
We chose not to include them because we had not had responses from them in prior outreach to the community, and because they were bisected by the urban growth boundary, it could leave them with a complicated situation to be partially within and partially outside the annexation area. We did attempt to contact them with people, we submitted the notice of intent to let them know that if they had any interest in joining us, that they should please reach out to us and let us know, but we have not heard back from any of those. I will say that a couple of the letters that we sent were returned by the post office. We resent them again to the, we sent them to the assessor's address, we resent them to another address we found, but some of them we may have had trouble reaching, but again, if any of those owners are interested, they may certainly contact us.
With that said, you did include at least one large bisected property in the proposal.
We did, that, because that's a very large property, and it's, yeah, well, taken in own by one of the initiating parties who wanted to come in, and we did that.
So, did I misunderstand you when, I don't think you exactly said this, but do you not need the tribe to make this happen?
We have talked to the tribe, and we have not heard any final response from them, and they have asked to be able to respond to questions on their own. I would turn it over to Chip to talk about the signature process. I wonder if we can certainly address that now, or we can go through, I don't know if there was going to be a council question answered.
I think your request earlier, Ann, was to continue or do your whole presentation under oath, so my bad as the chair, if I'm not holding too tight, I forgot, sorry. It'll be up to you as to what it all, if you want to take a question, otherwise, continue with your presentation.
Okay, we'll follow up on that. Okay, so, the timeline, we submitted the notice of intent to annex, and that's, what will follow that, if the council gives us the go-ahead this year, is we would intend to prepare an annexation implementation plan, input and collaborating with the city, and a pre-annexation agreement, which would set sort of the foundations of an agreement on how we move ahead with this annexation proposal. With those, in 2018, we would propose to annex the Snoqualmie Hills West area into the city of Snoqualmie. Following annexation, we would propose in 2018 and 2019 that we would develop the detailed land use plan for the annexation area, and conduct environmental review on that. The land use plan requires approval by the city council, and with that, we would prepare a development agreement between the city and the developers to move ahead. We would expect at that point to have a builder for the active adult community portion of the proposal onboard with us, because they would, of course, be very integral to developing the land use plan that we would want to have in the mixed-use final plan and conduct environmental review on. Following all of that, those approvals, then you move into the subdivision process. So, only after all of those are in place, in about 2019 to 2021, would we then submit the preliminary flat application, and move toward development of roads, and utilities, and flat infrastructure, and then the final flat approvals. With all of those in place, we would see phase build-out of the project, again, we're talking about probably three or more phases, that in 2021 would be the first phase, so the initial subdivision application, following that in 2021, the 2030 would be build-out of the first phase, and then subdivision approvals and build-out of the subsequent phases. So, overall, the process from today to build-out would be from 2017 to about 2030. We also wanted to point out on this timeline, that this coincides well with what we understand as the accelerated timeline for the funded design and construction of the interchange at I-90 and Highway 18. That that improvement should be well underway or completed about the time that we start building the first homes in the annexation area. So, that's a, that's a very good advancement for the transportation element. So, we've had a lot of inquiry about what is the public process, and what are the opportunities for public input as we move through this. Again, we're at the very beginning of the process, we are at the first of hopefully three meetings on the annexation, the 10% petition proposal. We'll move from that there into pre-annexation zoning. If the council accepts or considers our proposal to use mixed-use zoning for the entire annexation area, the pre-annexation zoning will require two public hearings on that proposal. The statute requires that, so that is, that is a mandatory thing to hold those two hearings. In addition, the process for developing and approving an annexation implementation plan then requires council approval, so that will be held in a public meeting, and finally, the pre-annexation agreement will be approved by council in a public meeting. So, many opportunities and points of opportunity for input by the public. And that's just in the pre-annexation phase, and again, we are proposing that a lot of the details of the proposal would occur post-annexation. So, post-annexation is where we would prepare the land use plan, and on that, we would conduct an environmental impact statement. The environmental impact statement process requires a public review and comment process, and that requires then response by the city, and with input from the applicant, to take that call into consideration. The mixed-use final plan process includes a public hearing, a planning commission recommendation, and council approval, so again, many points for public input. The development agreement between the city and the developer also, by statute, requires a public hearing, and then, once you've got all of that in place, and you move into the subdivision process, again, you're down to a real level of detail at that point, but there is, again, then, a public hearing required for each preliminary subdivision approval.
Ann, sorry, at least the point of clarification, are you combining the 10% and 60% into pre-annexation? Those two pages?
No, I guess, we should have, we should have another, under there, that would clarify the last bullet under pre-annexation, should be annexation?
Yeah.
Then you would move to the annexation.
I was confused by that.
Yeah, that, you know, well, I guess what we would proceed is, ordinarily, you would have the pre-annexation agreement, the annexation implementation agreement, and the annexation approval, so generally, all kind of all come together at one time, and be all working toward that annexation activity.
I guess I would say, for the purposes, as you can tell, as few people here that care, it's important that we keep our language the same, because people need to understand what's bothering you out ahead of time, that this is a very long process, that one vote doesn't mean something, or it might mean something, that we need to just make sure we're keeping the same language around it.
You are absolutely right.
I thought as a lawyer, you probably appreciate that.
So, that, that is the process that we've gone through, as directed by council of Sunball, and we would like then to move to some of the important topics that we know are compromised for city council and family residence here. The first one I'd like to introduce, Tom Porres, who is our water law expert, and Tom is going to speak to the council about water availability for the annexation.
Thank you. Dear Larson council members, good evening. My name is Tom Porres. I'm a water rights attorney, I've got about 30 years' experience in the state, representing dozens of cities, water districts, and resorts around the state with water rights issues, water system planning, and related litigation. I'm going to talk to you about municipal water capacity, starting with some, you know, general observations about that, and then, talking about the city's Snoqualmie's existing water capacity, and where we see that going, that there's additional water capacity coming online in the very near future, and I'll talk about some of those projects that the city has already funded, and others which are within its control, and we think are very foreseeable. I'll also talk about the timing of water availability as a question, as an issue. When is it appropriate to determine whether adequate capacity for this project exists? So, that's a, a lot of questions have been asked about that, and I'll address that.
Tom, now, it might be better if we had that mic dropped down, we'll give you one of the hand mics, might need to do the speed back and forth, maybe pick up the recording better.
Okay. All right, can everybody hear me? Keep it close. Then, finally, I'm just going to mention a few of the existing policies in the city's comprehensive plan related to water service, and how the project is consistent with that.
I'll give you one of the hand mics. Might be easier to do the speed back and forth, and then we pick up the recording better.
Okay. All right, can everybody hear me better? Keep it close. Then, finally, I'm just going to mention a few of the existing policies in the city's comprehensive plan related to the water service and how the project is consistent with that, and describe some of the benefits of the annexation of this project in the city. So, getting back to municipal water capacity generally. Water system capacity for municipalities is governed by water system plans, which are reviewed and approved by the Department of Health Office of Drinking Water. These are updated periodically, usually every six years. And in the case of Snoqualmie's water system plan, it was last updated in two thousand and twelve. And the Department of Health, when it approved that plan, did not put any limit on the number of connections that could be made to the city's water system. Water capacity in this region, I'm talking primarily Puget Sound region and the three counties in our proximity, has seen the ability to serve a rapidly growing population with existing resources. The population of this region has increased by over fifty percent since nineteen seventy-five, but in that period of time, water consumption is down by over fifteen percent. So, how is, how is this happening? Obviously, concerted efforts to conserve water, to fix leaking pipes, the adoption of tiered rate structures, new plumbing codes, all of these things have allowed communities in our region to serve growing populations with the same or even less water than they've had in the past. And these are both normal and verifiable practices that are studied in water system plans, and we see that the, for instance, the average water consumption per household has been dropping considerably over the last thirty, forty years, and continues to do so when there are new rates and when cities like yours invest in fixing leaky pipelines and new infrastructure. The same thing is happening in Snoqualmie. The city's two thousand and twelve water system plan, as I mentioned, looked at, showed that there was sufficient water rights and infrastructure to serve both its six-year and twenty-year growth forecast. Nevertheless, because of rapid growth in this community with the SR one and two projects and other approvals that have not yet been built out, like the lodge expansion, the city commissioned its consulting engineer, Grayan Osborne, last year to do an updated study of water capacity. And that matched the commitments that the city had already made to serve new growth projects that had not yet been built out with the available water rights and infrastructure that the city possesses in its system. Grayan Osborne, in that report, determined that after meeting all of the existing commitments that the city has made through.